All right, I am State Representative Todd Stevens, Chair of the Pennsylvania Commission on Sentencing, and we are here for the 2:00 Public Hearing Zoom webinar. And I get things going here. I guess we'll start off, maybe if we could just have the members who are here introduce themselves so that we get a, just on the record, everyone who's participating here from the commission and staff.
I guess I'll go first. I'm Judge Tamara Bernstein out of Cambria County and I'm the Vice Chair.
I'm David Sunday, New York County District Attorney.
I think that's all the members of the commission we have on right now. Oh, hi.
Hi, I'm State Rep Joanna McClinton. I am the Chair on the Committee for Outreach and Education. Hi, everybody.
Hello, hello. All right, I think that's all the commission members, is that right?
I believe Judge Tucker will be joining us eventually, and Professor Mystic, our counsel, is also with us.
All right, terrific. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark just to kind of give us a brief update on, you know, some legislative adoptions or new offenses that have been enacted and some other updates here just as we get started before we start beginning the testimony.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll briefly provide an overview of the proposal before us, and then I'll ask Diane to talk about some of the legislation that was recently enacted after the publication of these proposals so that we can receive comment on that, but the commission can consider that during the next meeting. As background, the commission has proposed amendments, Amendment 6, to the sentencing guidelines. I do want to make clear that these amendments are intended to address the immediate mandates that the commission received as part of the JRI 2 legislation and specifically Act 115. So there were some changes there in terms of the repeal of county IP and state IP, the creation of new correctional programs, and two mandates to the commission to incorporate probation guidelines into the sentencing guidelines and to create guidelines for the use of restrictive conditions which were previously called county intermediate punishment. And so there were immediate concerns the commission had to address, and that's what the focus of this amendment is. The commission since 2014 has been working on a comprehensive rebuilding of the sentencing guidelines, what we're envisioning as the eighth edition guidelines. And we had a two-year strategic planning work group, we had vetting by commission committees, and we've had a number of studies and reports done preparing for a rebuilding of the guidelines. And so I anticipate next year, we will probably have public hearings on those proposals and move towards adoption at some point. But I just wanted to make sure for the record that those in attendance are aware that we have sort of a two-track program, and what this focuses on are the immediate changes related to JRI 2 for the most part, so Amendment 6. And so these guidelines do include probation guidelines for the first time, and the probation guidelines have two aspects. One deals with specific recommendations at level two of the guidelines for the use of probation or the duration of probation. We have identified two categories, recommendations where probation is recommended for a period of not to exceed to one year, and other situations where probation, if used, is not to exceed two years as a recommendation. And then we have a second aspect which deals with the aggregate use of probation, and the commission has recommended in certain cases where probation is used without restrictive conditions that that be kept at five years, and recommend that for circumstances where probation is imposed with restrictive conditions, that aggregate probation period be capped at 10 years. So those are recommendations as part of Amendment 6. As far as other substantial changes to the guidelines, the largest are some additional enhancements to the guidelines, two in particular that are linked to statutory requirements. One is an enhancement related to domestic violence. We enacted that enhancement last year, and the modification in this amendment to the guidelines would include the cost of assessments as the recommended cost be placed on the defendant for the treatment of a minor who was sight or sound present to domestic violence. The second is a new requirement for the commission to create an enhancement for sexual extortion, and so that is part of this package. And then the commission did request comment on three other potential enhancements related to legislation that's moving through the General Assembly. House Bill 1827 relates to causing or aiding suicide, so it would be an enhancement related to Section 2505 of Title 18. Senate Bill 1075 related to sexual abuse of children or child pornography would modify an existing enhancement that relates to Section 6312 of Title 18. And homicide, I'm sorry, and House Bill 37, which addresses homicide by vehicle and aggravated assault by vehicle, Sections 3732 and 3732.1 of Title 75, again builds on existing enhancements that we have. So let me turn it to Diane that she can identify any other legislation that's been enacted since these proposals, and then I'll return to talk about resentencing guidelines. Diane?
Sure, there are two acts that impact some of the offenses that were not published in the bulletin. Act 40 is operating a watercraft under the influence and a passenger is under the age of 18. It applies to Title 30, Section 5502. These are all graded in M1, and an omnibus OGS of 5 would reply. It also creates the new offense of aggravated assault by watercraft with serious bodily injury. That's Title 30, Section 5502.4. It's an F3, and it would be assigned an OGS of 5. Then we have Act 63 of 2020. It modifies assault by prisoner. It adds assault by prisoner against employee with attempt or cause bodily injury. It's an F2 with an OGS 7 assigned, and it creates two new offenses, assault by prisoner against employee, attempt or cause serious bodily injury, that's an F1, an OGS 8 is assigned, and institutional sexual assault by peace officer. This is Title 183124.2. It's an F3, an OGS 6 is assigned, and it subcategorizes this into general institutional assault by a peace officer, and then when the victim is under age 18. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Diane. And then the final proposal before the, for public hearings is for the resentencing guidelines. Those guidelines just took effect earlier this year, but this amendment would address an issue that was raised from practitioners, and that is just a clarification within the guidelines of the statutory provision that says when a court is resentencing an offender following revocation of probation, the court should give due consideration to any service towards the original sentence. And so the commission has incorporated that into the language of the guidelines to make sure that that is considered when resentencing, when going back to the resentencing guidelines. With that, I'll turn it back to the chairman for the public hearing.
All right. Thanks so much. Before we go, do any of the members of the commission have any questions on the information that Mark or Diane covered? No? All right. All right, we will get on with the hearing then, and I'll just go in the order that Diane provided here. So Kate Bolton of Vital Strategies.
So I'm going to promote her to panelists, so she'll be able to turn on her video and mic to speak.
Great. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thanks for joining us virtually, we appreciate it.
I'm happy to be here, and hello to all the members of the commission. My name is Kate Bolton, and I'm the Legal Technical Advisor to the Overdose Prevention Program at Vital Strategies. On behalf of Vital Strategies, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the commission's resentencing guidelines. Vital Strategies is a public health nonprofit that works with state, county, and local governments and organizations to strengthen them. Through funds made available through Bloomberg Philanthropies, we are supporting overdose prevention efforts throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We wanted to offer comments here today because that mission to reduce overdose deaths is strongly linked with the commission's draft resentencing guidelines and their implications for Pennsylvania. Resentencing of individuals who are revoked for a technical violation is an important driver of incarceration in Pennsylvania, including for those who struggle with substance use disorder. Resentencing for revocations due to substance-related technical violations should prioritize non-incarceration alternatives. In 2019, Pennsylvania was estimated to have over 4,300 drug-related deaths, which is the equivalent of about 12 people dying a day. Preliminary data suggests that the COVID-19 pandemic is intensifying the overdose crisis in Pennsylvania. At the same time, we know that addressing the criminalization of substance use and working to reduce incarceration are critical to any effort to reduce overdose deaths overall. Research and data have consistently shown a significant overlap between criminal justice policy and the overdose crisis. For example, studies have found that nearly 2/3 of all people in jail have a substance use disorder, that more than half of people who face multiple arrests report a substance use disorder, that punitive responses to drug use are a significant driver of incarceration due to parole or probation violations, and that people who have been recently incarcerated face an extraordinarily elevated risk of fatal overdose soon after release. Vital Strategies understands that in Pennsylvania, approximately 80% of revocations are for technical violations alone, which includes drug possession or use and failure to attend treatment. Incarceration is the most common outcome of probation revocation, typically in county jail. As I highlighted a moment ago, even short periods of incarceration are associated with a significantly increased risk of fatal overdose. In a study of overdose decedents between 2008 and 2014 in Allegheny County, over 1/3 had a history of incarceration. Of those who had been incarcerated in the year before their death, over 1/4 overdosed within 30 days of their last release from jail. Reducing incarceration through alternative resentencing approaches is thus a critical overdose prevention strategy. Resentencing guidelines is currently drafted, direct judges to consider options available to them at the time of initial sentencing, which in many instances will include jail incarceration. Continually incarcerating someone with a substance use disorder does not promote public safety, reduce recidivism, or address the rehabilitative needs of individuals. The Pennsylvania Commission on Sentencing is well-positioned to interrupt the cycle of incarceration and fatal overdose in response to technical violations that are related to an individual's underlying substance use disorder. Vital Strategies strongly urges the commission to modify its resentencing guidelines to prioritize non-incarceration resentencing alternatives for individuals who are being revoked solely for a technical violation, particularly where the violation is related to someone's underlying substance use disorder. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I have a, do any members of the commission have any questions? I do have a question, but if any of the other members would like to ask a question, I'm happy to defer to them.
I have a question, but why don't you go first? It may be the same one.
Okay. When you talked, when you discussed, and first of all, I share your interest in trying to ensure that we're getting people the help that they need to overcome their addiction, you know, rather than simply, you know, repeatedly putting them through the revolving door of a jail or a state prison. Let me ask you this, though, I think you mentioned technical violations and you included drug possession or use in that definition, I think of a technical violation. Did you, did I hear that correctly, and could you help me understand how the subsequent drug possession or use is a technical violation?
That's my understanding of the range of technical violations that can lead to revocation. So for instance, someone being tested for drug use and screening positive.
Okay, so, all right, I got it. Now I understand, thank you for that. Do you have any suggestions on how we might prioritize non-incarceration alternatives with, under the, while maintaining the notion of including as broad a range of possibilities for our judges to consider, you know, all the aspects of an individual's case? Any suggestions on how we might do that?
Well, I think the starting point is that incarceration is not the answer when the underlying basis of someone's behavior is a substance use disorder. And so criminalizing health conditions and relying on incarceration is not the answer and is linked to the ongoing overdose crisis. I don't know if it's possible, but, you know, one could envision a tiered scheme by which technical violations and the type of technical violation at issue is taken into account to consider non-incarceration alternatives.
Okay, thank you for that. Judge, I don't know if you have any further questions there.
Maybe, it's kind of on the same line, but just to explore the question, because I agree with you wholeheartedly that jail doesn't cause people to stop using drugs, that treatment, this is the roller coaster of my day, every day. It is very rare that a day goes by when I'm dealing with an individual, when I have a lot of criminal cases where there isn't a large majority that are involved with substance abuse. So if I have someone who violates, they come back in, they're hot. I don't, and maybe that's where the numbers go awry. What does it, what does it look like to you for the non-incarcerated alternatives? Or in other words, if I have someone who comes in front of me, I'm going to want to get some kind of an assessment because I'm not a professional. I can't say, you know what we need to do, we need to get this person to IOP, or we need to get this person. So the question becomes, I think it's really difficult for a judge, and I don't know that a judge should be unilaterally making a decision of what kind of treatment is appropriate. But then I'm left with a second question of, okay, I have someone who's positive for methamphetamines, fentanyl, heroin, benzos, and THC, and they're high as a kite in front of me, so do I send them home on the bus and ask them to get an assessment? Do I, so those are just some of the practicalities of, yes, treatment is what this person needs, no, incarceration is not, but that timeframe in between where I'm saying, I'm not a professional to know what your needs are. So I guess what I'm asking for you is not a solution for everything, because if we all had, what would be business? But just your, from your perspective, my hypothetical or many similar things, when you say non-incarceration alternatives, how do you visualize the courts dealing with that stopgap between when I have somebody like that in front of me and that timeframe where I can get an assessment and make the order for the safest, best treatment for that individual and not end up reading about them in the newspaper the next day if I sent them home on the bus? So those are some of the concerns the court looks at where I don't, it is not my dream to stick that person in jail, but if I put them in jail, I know that they're going to be alive until I can get an assessment to get them where they need to be. So just with all of that, I just dumped on you, I'd love, I'd love your input, I am eternally looking for better answers.
Yeah, I think that's a very challenging question, and that gap, what do you do in the gap when you identify a need, but maybe there's a lag between that and an assessment occurring? I don't think in order to treatment is the answer. I think mandatory treatment has lots of limitations in terms of its effectiveness for the individual. I think part of it is more robust languages between the community-based treatment infrastructure and courts and probation so that the options available for someone are well-known to the courts as they're making these decisions and probation officers as they're, you know, providing supervision. I think building assessments earlier on in the process, maybe even at the time of initial sentencing, is another opportunity where different pathways for individuals could be identified, including connection to community-based, evidence-based treatment.
Chairman, I see Representative McClinton's hand is up.
Everything, go ahead, Representative.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Scott, excuse me, Todd. My question was about whether or not your studies have shown a distinction between pretrial and posttrial incarceration, and if you have a recommendation on that end. I mean, we obviously are the sentencing commission, but what came to mind as you were testifying was the Khalif Browder story, where he spent three years pretrial in Rikers Island for a theft and upon release, you know, committed suicide. That's the story that came to mind as you were testifying.
Yeah, I think whether someone is incarcerated because they've been sentenced or they're incarcerated and pretrial doesn't really make a difference in terms of how it elevates their risk of fatal overdose upon release. So I mean, I think any way in which we can reduce reliance on pretrial incarceration, especially for people with a substance use disorder, is an important way of reducing fatal overdose.
Thank you.
DA Sunday, just give me one second, because I want to make sure that we just let everyone know Judge Tucker has joined us. Thanks, Judge, for joining us. And DA Sunday, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Quick question, first of all, I appreciate your testimony, and I think that everyone here, well, I'm assuming this, and I think it's true, is that everyone here agrees that incarceration is not the best option for someone who's in the throes of substance abuse with most likely co-occurring mental health diagnoses as well. One of the issues we see, and we have many robust treatment options in York County to the best we can, going to Representative McClinton's statement, we do a lot of work with pretrial, with all kinds of different pretrial diversion programs, but one of the things we see, and I'd like to know what your opinion on this, is a lot of individuals who end up getting their probation revoked as a result of drug use do not want to participate in a lot of the treatment options that are available to them. And we've seen a lot of data through our York opioid collaborative that when we force someone into treatment, well, first of all, I mean, we can't, like, we don't have secure treatment to begin with, and so that's part one, but part two to this is they fail and they come right back again. And so what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we come at this work from a harm reduction orientation and philosophy, which is grounded in meeting people where they are, whatever their readiness for engagement and services or treatment is. I think that speaks to the importance of having a range of alternatives available, of varying intensity and varying modalities, so that people have options. But you're absolutely right that there are those who are simply uninterested in treatment. I think the answer is still not incarceration. That person, it may take them some time, but eventually, hopefully, there will be a readiness to engage with life-saving and evidence-based services. But there is no easy answer to that question.
I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Any other members of the commission, have any questions or comments? All right, Kate, thank you so much for your testimony, we really appreciate, oh, I think Mark has.
Yeah, well, not a member of the commission, but, you know.
Feel free to jump in anytime, Mark.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, I wanted to thank Kate and Vital Strategies. As members know, the commission has been partnering with Vital Strategies during the past year or so to really try to study this area, and our Deputy Director Matt Kleiman and our Post Doc Miranda have been working closely with Vital Strategies and others, just try to understand this area. And as everyone has said, you know, I think we're all focused on trying to promote the use of treatment, and it's just trying to figure out some of the practical applications of this. One of the things that's built into the resentencing guidelines that I think is important to consider is that all of these individuals are under supervision. And so we're trying to take advantage of the information available to the court or information that can be compiled, assessments, evaluations, things like that, that can be compiled during the revocation process, during that period of time, to bring information to the court to help inform the resentencing decision. So I think there are opportunities. It could be at a chronic state, at a, you know, when there's a critical event that leads to someone, as the judge said, coming before the court or being arrested and detained because of violations of probation, you know, there may be an opportunity there to think about, can evaluations or assessments be done? Can a plan be put in place to try to think about treatment options rather than confinement? But that also goes to the issue of funding for those kind of programs and the right fit for that person, and as DA Sunday said, the willingness of that person to sort of get on board with it. So it's a complicated issue, but the commission has tried to build into these resentencing guidelines that expectation that the probation department is either using a risk needs responsivity assessment or drug and alcohol assessment or other tools to give the court the best information to act on. So I wanted to make sure we were aware, everyone was aware of that. And it sort of ties into what the commission did in the sentencing guidelines with restrictive intermediate punishment and drug and alcohol treatment, where we have guidelines that recommend confinement, but we've developed this mechanism where we say if a person's drug-dependent, here's a whole pathway of doing an assessment and placing a person into treatment as a clinical alternative to confinement. And we receive funding from the General Assembly to support counties in doing that. And that's a model that has worked well, there's always a need for more funding, but the model's worked well, and I think we're trying to do that to some degree with resentencing to make sure treatment is part of the mix. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Any other questions or comments from any commission members or staff? All right, thank you, Kate, appreciate your testimony. Next up, we have Mary Ann Stein from the ACLU.
And Kristy will unmute and have Mary Ann join us. There we go.
Hey, everyone.
Hi there, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commission members and staff. My name is Mary Ann Stein, I'm with the ACLU of Pennsylvania. I want to thank everyone for giving me the time to speak today. We are urging the Pennsylvania Commission on Sentencing to reject the current proposed sentencing guidelines amendment, but you can revise the sentencing matrix to reconfigure the way prior record score is calculated. We also suggest that the commission postpone their vote on this proposed amendment until December 2020 so that there can be a sufficient amount of time to review public comment and make any of the necessary changes. As most of you know, Pennsylvania is in the midst of a mass incarceration crisis, and this commission bears some responsibility. The commission had the opportunity to revamp the sentencing guideline matrix in such a way based on data and evidence to reduce unnecessary incarceration by reconfiguring the prior record score to allow for lapsing. By keeping the prior record score the same and increasing sentencing enhancements and offense for abuse scores, the commission chose instead business as usual. Passage of this amendment will lead to Pennsylvanians being subject to even lengthier prison terms. Pennsylvania has the highest adult incarceration per capita rate in the Northeast. This crisis takes a terrible toll on individuals, families, and communities. We incarcerate at a rate of 725 people per 100,000, higher than the national average of 698 per 100,000. In addition, black Pennsylvanians are 8.9 times more likely, and Latinos 3.3 times more likely to be incarcerated than white Pennsylvanians. We urge the commission members to turn their attention to the necessary decarcer work that must be done here in Pennsylvania. As I mentioned before, the commission failed to change the way in which the prior record score is calculated, blatantly ignoring substantial evidence that was presented by former commission member Rachel Lopez, Professor Rachel Lopez and her students from their Pennsylvania Prior Record Reform Project. That evidence demonstrated that prior record score should take lapsing into account in order to limit the negative effects of stale chronal history on future sentences. There is a wealth of data demonstrating that recidivism declines with age. Ignoring this extensive evidence, the commission instead chose to continue to the Commonwealth's bloated sentencing. the Commonwealth's bloated sentencing and mass incarceration system. In addition, the proposed sentencing matrix, the commission kept recommended periods of county confinement alongside the probation recommendations. This gives little incentive for courts to give limited probation terms in lieu of county incarceration. While this does encourage courts to limit probation terms, it does nothing to discourage unnecessary incarceration for low-level offenses. We ask the commission to implement clear limits on probation terms, as there is an overwhelming amount of evidence that supports this. A recent study published by Columbia University found that probation and parole are leading drivers to mass incarceration, and reiterated the need to cap probation terms to one or two years, which is the necessary time to achieve the rehabilitative and accountability purposes of community supervision. Lengthy probation terms not only stretch our strained supervision resources, but they serve as unnecessary tripwires, sending people back to our jails and prisons for technical violations. The commission, while on one hand recognizes that shorter probation sentences are evidence-based, on the other hand, recommends a cap of 10 years, which is far too long for a person to be kept on probation. We commend the commission for proposing a limit of five years for certain aggregated sentences of probation as a restorative sanction. However, this only impacts certain low-level offenses. By continuing to disregard the rigorous data and evidence in terms of probation supervision, the commission contributes to PA's mass incarceration crisis. Additionally, the commission continues to create sentencing enhancements with or without a mandate. These enhancements arbitrarily increase sentencing. Prosecutors are already equipped with sentencing options, and there's more information in our More Law Less Justice report. The section on fines and costs leaves out something critically important. Courts must consider ability to pay when imposing a non-mandatory fine. This is both a statutory and constitutional requirement. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruled last year that Title 42, Section 9726 is an unambiguous statutory command requiring record evidence of the defendant's ability to pay prior to imposing a fine. While this is cited in the list of relevant statutes in the sentencing guidelines, when referencing drug convictions, there are no mandatory fines. These cases are subject to the ability to pay analysis. Moreover, the table converting fines to hours of community service by simply multiplying them against Pennsylvania's minimum wage of $7.25 is frankly cruel. Title 42, Section 9730b3 says that "the amount of community service after a person cannot pay must be just and practicable under the circumstances." Every piece of legislation that our general assembly introduced dealing with this issue calculated community service hours at $20 an hour. By calculating an hour of community service as worth as only $7.25, which is less than half of the hourly rate typically used in legislation related to community service, this can lead to a person needing to work a vast number of hours, more than double a normal rate, in order to pay off their fines. In closing, for all of the reasons above, we are asking the commission to reject the current proposal of this amendment and postpone the vote on these policies until December 2020, when there has been a sufficient amount of time to review public comment and make the appropriate necessary changes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do any commission members have any questions or comments? I would, Mary, oh, weird, you just moved across my screen. I was like, where'd she go? Thank you for the testimony. Certainly appreciate it. One thing I do want to just make clear, we've had, there's been a lot of conversation about lapsing. I know you raised it pretty significantly. And I know we've been talking about it for a little while. I mean, I know that Professor Lopez and her students did some work there. And it is something that we have been discussing. And, you know, I know personally from my standpoint, you know, as we've had conversations, I fully envision lapsing provisions being a part of the comprehensive eighth edition guidelines that we're simultaneously working on through all this. I think, you know, this, this amendment is intended to be sort of a more rapid response to some of the legislation that's moved. But I know I, for one, perfectly understand that we have more work to do, and lapsing is something we definitely need to tackle as a commission. I know we've kicked around, we had a working group work on that for, for some time as well. And so there were a number of proposals and alternatives that we have looked into and studied. And I know we've had a number of professors inform us on different approaches there. So I, I fully expect that to be a part of reforms to the guidelines soon. I mean, a much more comprehensive reform that, that is pending. Mark, I don't know if you have anything, if you want to expand on that at all, as regards to lapsing.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you. And I think, I think Mary Ann raised a really good point, because lapsing is important. I think there, there was support on the commission to make those changes. But, but there, the, the commission has been talking about rebuilding prior record score, rebuilding the guidelines. And on the prior record score, it's not only about lapsing, it's about which offenses counted the prior record score from the start, and how much do they weigh, and how many categories of prior record score do you have? And so it's a, it's been a lot of work. There's been a lot of work underway. And I think, as I said at the start, you know, I anticipate next year, we will have public hearings on the eighth edition guidelines, because that's important. There's also the interaction between the prior record score and the offense gravity score, and getting to very much more discreet sentence recommendations, which I think is another issue you raised about recommendations for probation alone versus probation blended with confinement. So I think many of the things you raise are, are in the mix and have been in the mix since, well, 2014, I guess, when we started working on the rebuild. And so it's been a slow process, but as you said, Professor Lopez has been helpful, Carnegie Mellon, Penn State, a number of other universities have been working with us on it. And, and I will add that one of the other things that we're looking at with the eighth edition guidelines is, is a much more, a greater sensitivity and, and, and research into race and ethnicity and gender and other types of issues. So there's a lot of work to do, but I think we're, we've done a lot of the preliminary work on it.
Just one other, I guess, a question, Mary Ann. You mentioned disparity and not using the, not using the minimum wage in Pennsylvania as, you know, is the, I guess, the linchpin for translating community service hours into a monetary fine. And I know you said there was another figure. What was that other figure, and where does that come from?
So there are pieces of legislation that were introduced. I have them House Bill 562 and Senate Bill 69. Those were introduced in terms of approximately $20 an hour when calculating community service for fines.
Do you know, I mean, I guess the question becomes, do you know the basis for the, I mean, is this, I'm trying to get a sense of whether these are arbitrary numbers, or if there's some basis for that?
I'm just going off of what was introduced in legislation. And again, in statute, it talks about it being just and practicable under circumstances. So what is practical for the defendant at the time?
So I think the one I viewed, and Mark, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I viewed the goal here to be promoting more community service as an alternative to fines, not necessarily the opposite, right? I mean, am I reading that right?
That is correct. And, and we have to go back in time. The commission had a mandate to create fines guidelines. So the commission created fines guidelines back in 2008, I believe, as part of the sixth edition revised guidelines. So that was our mandate, a fines guideline. And what the commission did was use that as an opportunity to encourage consideration of, of the use of community service in lieu of fines. So the starting point was instead about community service, not fines, so that, so that financial ability to pay, things like that, were not part of the mix. It was just a sole sanction as an alternative to lengthy probation as, as a sole sanction. And then to the degree that the court was going to impose a fine to create a standard where the fine was linked to the person's ability to pay. So in fact, when we built those community service guidelines, we used Pennsylvania's median wage as the basis for that. So we calculated those community service ranges based on the median income at the time. Now, that was, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, so maybe it's gone up. But I know it wasn't minimum wage. It was way higher than that. And it was the median Pennsylvania wage. And then the idea was, if the court was going to use communities, was not going to use community service, it could only, it could only impose a fine if there was the ability to pay. And then we wanted to link the, the fine to the person's income. So it's, it's the day fine system or process. And so that's what we're saying, is if the court decides to do a fine instead of community service, the default is to use the minimum wage as the fine provision. So that actually reduces the fine instead of increasing it. So this is just sort of, I think it's sort of the reverse of, of what you might have presented. It's not using that to create a fine. It's focusing on community service. And then if it's going to be converted to a fine, have the, have the fine linked to what the person's making. And so the default is less, which is community service. Now, that's been in the guidelines for a long time. This, this proposal just builds it into the, into the matrix, because we wanted to, again, encourage the use of community service or fines as a sole sanction with no probation. And that's why if you look at level one of the guidelines, there's not a recommendation for probation. It's intended to be restorative sanctions like community service or fines.
Got it.
Okay. DA Sunday has a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Oh, sorry. Do you want to go?
No, no, go ahead.
I apologize. First of all, thank you for your testimony. And I'm going to, I'll review your written testimony in detail. I just had, so to start with, you know, I firmly, firmly believe that we need to revisit probation, how it's done, all the reasons surrounding that. Everyone, I think everyone agrees with, again, like, a lot of these situations we talk about, most people completely agree with the premise and the desired end result. As a DA, a lot of the decisions, well, all the decisions I make have to be tied to public safety in, in some fashion. And studies show that a lot of things that we may not have originally considered are actually tied directly to public safety, right? Keeping families together, decreasing addiction, treating mental health, things of that nature. That all is tied directly, reentry is tied directly to increasing public safety. The one question I have for you is, are there any circumstances that you envision where a lengthy probation sentence would be appropriate?
That's a tough, that's a tough question to answer. I would think that it's going to depend on the offense. Sometimes, and I mean, if you look at the sentencing guidelines, you look at the matrix, probation is not an appropriate option for a certain offense. However, those, the probation used as a sentencing alternative for certain offenses, that's outlined in the sentencing guidelines. If it's not, then it wouldn't be probation. So I'm thinking, anything that probation is, where probation is recommended, I think that there should be hard caps on them. There should be term limits.
Okay. So when you say term limits, that goes back to the five-year that you were proposing. Is that correct?
So there's research that will say that two years is the max. They say if someone's going to violate or slip up or whatever it might be, it will be 18 to 24 months. If you're, the five years is what the commission is suggesting for aggregated sentences of probation. So we do commend you for that. However, other legislation that's been introduced in the general assembly, Senate Bill 14 and House Bill 1555, before they were amended, had probation passed of five years for felonies and three years for, or two years for misdemeanors. So that's something separate. But I do want to just make note that this commission has an incredible amount of power to change the system. And we're calling on you to do so, you know, that you can do it without a mandate. Probation is such a huge hot button issue right now. And we can really, really decrease the prison population, prison and jail population by fixing the probation system.
If, just real quick, by way of follow-up, I mean, you know, again, turning back to whether certain times it is appropriate for a lengthy probation sentence, you know, from my experience, you know, we have everything from early termination of probation for people that comply. And so we're pretty forward-thinking with regard to the way we approach a lot of these challenges. There's a hurdle that does exist. There are cases where a lengthy probation sentence is warranted and appropriate. And so, for example, I see a lot of white collar type of cases, embezzlement and thefts, where the time to pay back the restitution is, is very long. And in the alternative, if, if that cap existed, then it would be a pretty short, I'll say, sentence that someone might, may receive. So I'll give you an example. And again, you know, I know that one example doesn't tell the story, right? Like, the story is much greater than one or two examples, like, as we all discuss these issues. But on a regular basis, there are embezzlement and theft cases where it may take someone 10, 20 years to pay, to pay back the restitution. And so what often happens is, you know, we, we sort of forget about the impact of these financial crimes. When you take someone's ability to pay their bills away from them, when they lose their job, things of that nature, that is a tremendous impact. And we have to have the ability to make sure that we, that we keep these individuals on probation long enough for them to pay the money back. And so I'm just, just generally, I'm, you know, what are your thoughts on that? And what type of solution would you have for that?
I really appreciate that question, DA Sunday. And I do want to commend York County, because I know the chief at probation and parole, and your policy for early termination for probation is working there. I think everything you're doing there is great. So I wanted to say that first. The thing with restitution is, you don't need people to stay on probation for that. It can go to civil judgment. Debt collectors can handle it. Why put the burden on the county and the probation departments? And then you have people paying probation supervision fees when they're still trying to pay off restitution. So it could be, you know, when all that money could be going to restitution, we're paying supervision fees. And again, you can, you can have debt collectors, and it can be a civil judgment.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate that response. I mean, I, you know, I respectfully disagree. You know, once you take them out of probation, it's not happening. And so, but again, I really appreciate the response, and I appreciate, you know, all of the information that you put forward today. But, you know, that is just an issue that, that exists, that, that we can't ignore as we're having this discussion. So, but, but thank you for everything.
Chair, if I could just add one, one final comment in response to Mary Ann's discussion regarding duration, because I think she raised a really good point. And when the commission was trying to look at what the current practices were, and what kind of recommendation the commission could make on that aggregate probation term, there were a number of things that came into play. One thing was, we did several years of data analysis, looking at what the, what the, just what the duration of probation was for sentences in Pennsylvania. For each sentencing year, just looked at every term of probation, every aggregate term of probation. And there were, in, in each of the years that we looked at, there were, there were aggregate terms of probation of 70 or 80 years. And so we knew that there were extreme cases, because think about cases where you have many counts, and even for relatively minor offenses, think about, I mean, we, we've seen cases where we receive guidelines on 3,000 counts of bad checks, or something like that. So really minor offenses, but many of them. And you can string together a lifetime of probation. And so one of the things we looked at in the data was just the, the distribution, the frequencies of the use of probation. And, and the idea was, there should be some kind of aggregate recommendation, and that's why we built that in. And then when we were looking at the duration of that, one of the things the commission talked about was, you know, some of the research out there, three to five years, things like that, shorter periods of time. But there's also research that, that was done by Professor Al Blumstein at Carnegie Mellon University around redemption. And his and subsequent research around, when is a person sort of back to where they would have been if they hadn't offended? I mean, if you look at sort of the civilian unoffending population, and you look at these people, what's the, what's population, and you look at these people, what's the, let's, what's the duration of time that a person is is out and has not re-offended that puts them close to what the regular population is? And it varies on the offense type, but it's, it's eight or 10 or 12 or 15 years. So it is a longer period of time. And so when the commission discussed, what should the caps be? They came up with these two categories. And the longer category is one that may include incarceration or restrictive conditions, but it also takes into account that those are the kind of cases where the redemption research actually identifies longer periods that are sort of in place before someone returns to a lower level of of recidivism. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
All right. And next up testifying is Tasneem, oh, boy, Salaiman.
So I don't see that individual on the list of attendees as having joined us. I don't know. There's someone else that's attending. Maybe he's under a different name.
Tasneem was with Black Men Heal. So if there's somebody else, either from Black Men Heal, or, you know, anyone at all who would like to offer testimony, we're happy to hear from you at this point. So if you want to, how can they, Christie, how do they think?
They should have an icon where they can raise their hand, so.
All right.
I am not seeing anyone, so.
All right. Well, do any other, any members of the commission or staff have anything else that they want to cover today as a part of the hearing? All right. Well, having, having not heard from anyone else, I think we can go ahead and adjourn this hearing. And we'll see everybody at the next, or Mark, when, I guess, before we adjourn, when's the next hearing?
Sure. We have, we have two hearings scheduled on parole guidelines and recommitment ranges. The first hearing is on August 31 at 10 o'clock in the morning. We'll be hosting it out of SCI banner and linking to four other SCIs, but it's open to the public. But the only testimony we will receive is from individuals within the institutions. And so, but, but the public is welcome to attend and and view it. And commission members will be able to ask questions, but otherwise, there will not be other testimony. The second hearing on on parole will be on Wednesday, the 9th of September at 2:00 in the afternoon. And that will be out of our State College or University Park office, but both of these will be conducted by Zoom. And so we encourage people to sign up. We have quite a few people signed up for, I know, the the hearing on the 31st. And then the commission's next commission meeting, when it can consider any of these items, is then on Thursday, September 10th, 11th. I'm confusing my dates. Maybe Diane can help you on the date of that.
The 10th.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Well, and that, look, I know, Mark, I, I know I had asked if we could make sure that we were hearing from, you know, those that are going to be most affected by some of these, these guideline changes that we're contemplating here as it relates to recommitment and things like that. And so I know you and the staff have worked really hard to make sure that, you know, by working with the Department of Corrections, making sure it was available to those, again, who are going to be impacted, you know, most personally by these changes. So I thank you for all your efforts in, in putting that together. And we'll see everybody who wants to participate on the 31st.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.